School Board meeting to order for Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. It is 3:31. So we're gonna, this is the workshop and we're gonna start with administrative informal information. So I am Trinay Strix, I'm the school board chair and the administrative informal and workshop session of this meeting of the school board of the city of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at 3:31 on this 24th day of January 2023. Members of the public will be able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on www.vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to all those that have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce their school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex Einstein Lab is Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Manning, Ms. Morton, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Owens.
Thank you. So we're gonna start with a school board administrative matters and reports. Do we have any school board members that need to share anything? I think Ms. Weems does, I know that. Is there anyone else? Okay?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, a couple things before, as you know, we're going to do the committee assignments. And we had introduced, I had introduced the idea of a joint city council, school board committee for workforce development. And the Vice Mayor, Rosemary Wilson, and I have talked several times about that. And we're gonna move forward with that, but first she and I are going to meet with staff from both the city and the school board. And we're going to really outline exactly who will be on that committee, from the business community, from our partners, from city council, school board and staff and everything. And so we will assign that once we get a good cover page to explain exactly what the makeup of the committee will be and what the purpose and the hopeful outcomes of that committee. So we will bring that back to the school board in a few weeks. So that's why it was not on your committee list.
And plus, the advisory committee for the VOTEC Center was held off on that list as well because that was going to go in conjunction with it. We felt like Ms. Weems and I were talking about if whoever was on that joint committee would probably be, they would be working closely with whoever it was on the advisory committee. So it might be the same people.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay, and then one more matter. Joel Andrews and John Sutton and I went to Richmond this morning and met with eight different folks, a combination of delegates, senators, and appropriations/ budget staff people. And we were talking about the recovery school. So as you know, that we were, we got the thumbs up from y'all to move forward with just kind of some investigative work and on our part before we make a formal presentation. And one of those was to work with Old Dominion and fill out the lab school application, which we did do. Unfortunately, we have not heard anything from the Department of Ed. We thought that we would hear by Christmas and we have heard nothing. We haven't heard yay, nay. So we're still waiting for that. So while we're waiting for that, we thought that we needed to pursue, go ahead and be kind of assertive and pursue other funding ways. And so we went and talked with appropriations folks that hand out the money at the state level. And I think that it was a very successful meeting. Again, we talked with eight different people and I thought the reception was very positive. Hopefully, we'll find out in about a week and a half if the budget amendment, Anne Farrell-Tata is putting in a budget amendment to allow us to have this money, very similar to what they did in Chesterfield when they did the recovery school out there. And so we'll find out in about eight or 10 days if it makes it on the, on one or both sides, the House and the Senate. And then after that, hopefully, it will make it on both sides. They'll vote and hopefully, we'll get some funding. So at the end of the day, we're hopeful that we'll have several choices as we move forward with the recovery school. Thank you so much.
Okay, I have one other thing that I want to mention. And, and that is, we did not set up a retreat, a midterm retreat, or mini-retreat, as we've called it, for usually that we do it in January. And I've had some people mention it to me. Carolyn and I talked about it as well. And then watching the retreat that the city council had today, they had theirs today and tomorrow. I was watching as much as I could today. It just brought to mind again, do we need one? Do we not? Of course, it will be in February, which is a very busy month for us, working with budgets and all of that. So what I want to do is hear from my school board members, my colleagues about it, and if you have any ideas of what you would want if we did it, or if you just want to wait and have our full retreat that we have in July, okay? Do you need it? Do, I know as I watched today in the city council, they started out with a really great opener, which I would love to do, whether we do it at this next one, if we do one in February, or even if we do it in July. It's your why. Why are you here? What's your reason? It was great. Each one of them had the time they needed to speak and it was very good. And I learned about every one of them, even ones that have been on there for a long time, including our mayor. So that was just something that I thought was very informative. And there's other things I thought about, but I just, I wanted to see if you guys, and particularly our newly elected school board members, what are you thinking? What are your thoughts? If we did it in, in February, which that's when we really need to go ahead and do it because it really should have been in January if we did it. The only week that we could not do it would be the 12th through the 18th because Dr. Spence has to be away for that time. So I just need your thoughts. Okay, Ms. Franklin first, and then Ms. Manning.
I'm sorry, I know that I just walked in, but if we're, I am actually out. I will be here for the meetings, but I will be out of town in February in the last week. So any rescheduling that we do that weekend, we'll be either having to call in or miss.
Be out of town the last week of February. Thank you.
So, you know, I could probably make something work if we had to. I don't personally have any need for us to meet. It's a pretty busy month for me, but I did want to comment on your, your why. Is that what you said, Ms. Riggs? I like that idea. Perhaps we could look to do that at our July retreat. Thank you.
I need to hear from my newly elected, okay, Ms. Brown and then Ms. Anderson, and then Ms. Morton.
Sorry, I was trying to figure out how to work the microphone. I don't think that I personally need a retreat in February. It's a busy month for us as school board members with the budget already. So I think perhaps we should just wait until our full retreat in the summer. Thank you.
So. Anderson.
I, I'm not sure we need a whole day, but I think the budget could use some extra time of discussion. And so I would suggest that if people aren't in favor of doing a whole day's retreat, maybe we do dedicate, you know, a half day and then dedicate it toward one of our budget sessions so that we could really, because we do have a lot of new board members who may have a lot of questions about the budget. And so I feel like maybe that might lend itself to that. And if there are other things that we need to talk about, we could see how much time that would take. But maybe instead of one of our regular school board meetings starting at 4:00, 4:30, we should maybe start, plan on starting it at 1:00. And that would give us a lot of extra time to build in some other things that we could, we might need to discuss. I have some ideas of things that I thought would be, would be, we would benefit from if we had a retreat, but you know, if people are not in favor of that, then I would suggest, because the budget is really complicated and we do, we might have lots of questions, especially from the new members, well, actually from anybody because the budget is so complicated. I think all of us could utilize that time. So.
Okay, thank you.
That's my suggestion.
Ms. Morton?
Do I need to do anything? No, I can hear myself. Okay. I would be flexible. I like Ms. Anderson's idea of perhaps adding on to a Tuesday meeting with my scheduling difficulties. I've already made some commitments for some school visits the week of the 13th and the 20th, but not on Tuesdays. So we could certainly add in some time before a meeting. But I would appreciate the opportunity to get to know the other board members, get to know their interests in public service, and the things of interest to them in terms of the school district itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Culpepper?
Thank you. I don't have a strong opinion one way or another on whether to add that to the schedule, but I will say from a scheduling perspective, I generally am able to kind of rip off the entire week that we have, a meeting planned already for the most part. So if you add it on another week, it's gonna be difficult for me to make it.
You're saying it would, you know, a week of one of our school board meetings?
Right.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Callen?
Do the same thing Kathleen had, see if I can navigate the equipment. I also would second Mrs. Anderson's perspective. Whether it's the same day that we're already having a meeting or a separate day altogether, my world seems to revolve around the concept of drinking out of a fire hose these days. So if we add it on to a day where we're already doing a meeting, that might be described as systems overload, but I think a half day would be great because there's no shortage of additional instructions that this gentleman can benefit from. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you for your thoughts. It's, it's looking like, like half and half, I guess. So I will, I will talk, tomorrow we will be doing our agenda planning, Mrs. Weems and Dr. Spence and I. So we'll talk about it then and then we'll get back with you guys. And in the meantime, if you think of something that, oh man, I really would like to, you know, know about this before, you know, or if this could help, send me something, okay? Email it to me. Thank you.
I'll just add one thing I didn't say. I didn't weigh in one way or another, but I will say, you know, I would lean more towards doing it than not. But again, I don't have a strong.
More towards doing it than not? Okay, all right. So that's what I have to, okay, thank you. Ms. Weems?
Real quick before we move forward, the dais, the regular dais is curved and we can see you. Remember, I cannot see anybody past Ms. Riggs except for Mr. Culpepper. So, so when you want to speak, you know, sign it with this and maybe, yeah, jump up and down and scream and do a little dance because I cannot, I don't, it's very hard to see up here. Thank you. So be patient with us. We'll try to work it together.
And we have asked about the dais too. They've been working on it. It's just not been very easy to find the right facility, I mean, the right apparatus, desk apparatus to get it curved so we can see well. So anyway, I do know that that's been asked several times and we've been, you know, by several people, and we've asked about that. So they're, they're trying. Okay? All right, so I think that's it for now. Oh, I know, one more, one more announcement. And you'll get a reminder tomorrow. Don't forget your economic, statement of economic form that you need to turn in. Remember, it's the first. So if you have any questions about it, you know, just send an email, call Regina, but you need to get that done, okay? Okay, we've got, I think she's received three so far. Okay, so we are going to the parliamentary procedures. Our presenter is Kamala Lanetti, our school board attorney. And this is hopefully gonna answer some of your questions when she finishes. Would you like for it after you finish to ask questions or while we're doing it, just in case? Because you want to get through, how long is your presentation?
My speed or your speed?
I want you to slow it down if you can, please.
I'm gonna try to keep it under half an hour.
Okay, all right. So do you want to ask? Do you want to ask?
Mrs. Manning has also provided, and you have the handout in your package, she provided up about one or two page, some recommendations. So I want to leave her a little bit of time also to talk about some of that, if she'd like to. Don't worry, you got, you got 20 minutes to come.
Okay, all right.
You're gonna be fine. This one.
Okay, thank you.
Start, and, am I controlling this, Ms. Torniata? Okay. Starting parliamentary procedure. You remember two Januaries ago, the Governors Committee decided to do a presentation on parliamentary procedure. I've updated that in this time and obviously, we have new, four new school board members to do that. So we're gonna go forward with that today. Just a couple background issues I want to talk about. Robert's Rules of Order are generally the parliamentary procedures that are most commonly used in the world. But I want to point out to you that they're not law, they're not required by anything. They're simply the most commonly used procedures. You also have what's known as Appendix B, that is the first appendix to your bylaws. What Robert's Rules of Order says is that for small groups, then for Robert's Rules of Order, that's generally a group under 22, they strongly suggest that you not use all of the Robert's Rules. They suggest that you come up with your own rules to do that because you simply don't need the large amount of body rules that are applying to a body that has hundreds of people in them. So one of the things you've had, it's been here for as long as I've been around, which is over 25 years, Appendix B, which sets out the rules. And I'm gonna go through that with you in a little bit, but that's kind of your cheat sheet for rules. It will answer about 90% of the questions that you need for procedures on there. You could, these are your bylaws, rules, you adopt them, you can change them. You do have certain bylaws that also have some of the procedures, and I'll talk about some of them. I will also note for you, the Bylaw 138 says, "When a bylaw or policy or regulation or applicable law doesn't adequately address how a school board meeting is conducted, or if there isn't enough time for the school board to get together to take a vote on something, then the chair, the clerk, and the superintendent are designated, can make the best decision to go forward on a meeting." And that has happened a couple times over the years. We've had weather incidents, we've had last minute changes in rooms, things that had to be accommodated. Your bylaw allows them to do that. You as a school board can always override that. For the most part, it's not parliamentary procedure, but sometimes it's simply not enough time to get you all together. Again, as I mentioned, Robert's Rules of Order, it's not law, it is not required. It is your choice to do that. There are actually other parliamentary rules out there that you can use, but most people use Robert's Rules of Order. So here's the basic comments, concepts that you have with Robert's Rules of Order. The idea is that someone has to facilitate the discussion, the orders. That's why you have to have a chair or president or somebody running your meeting, that all members have the right to bring up ideas and to discuss those ideas, and the body has a right to come to a conclusion on the idea or the discussion, that members should come to an agreement on what to do about the idea that was brought up, and that the majority will rule in the end. However, the minority has the right to speak on it, so there must be procedures in place to let the minority members speak up. There should be checks and balances put in your procedures, and there should be impartiality or fairness. Again, so I'm gonna switch you to Appendix A and your rules. I actually, we attached a copy of Appendix A for you. You can find this on the website. It is at the end of your bylaws. The first rule is, "It shall be the duty of the chair, the presiding officer, to preserve order and to endeavor to conduct all business before the school board with propriety and dispatch at all times." That's your first rule. Two, "When any business is brought regularly before the school board, the consideration same cannot be interrupted except by a motion, that can be for adjournment, to lie on the table, to postpone, or if there's an amendment." So you need to keep going with your meeting. Three, "The chair may speak to points of order, preference to other school board members." When you're talking about a point of order, it's when, "I think they're using the wrong procedure, I need to interrupt, Madam Chair, there's a situation going on." That's a point of order. So the chair will speak to that from other school board members, and the chair then decides questions of order, not the rest of you, subject to an appeal. So if the chair, if you ask Madam Chair, "I'd like us to stop and have dinner now at 3:30," and she said, "We're not doing that, the agenda," then the rest of you could say, "You know what? I want to vote on this, can we have dinner at 3:30?" You can override what the chair says. Otherwise, the chair is gonna control the meeting consistent with whatever your bylaws or rules are at that time. Special rule four is, "A motion made must be seconded and then repeated distinctly or read aloud by the chair or the maker of the motion before it's debated on." That way, everybody knows what's happening. You'll see me occasionally remind you, what is the motion? I very distinctly remember many years ago, Mrs. McLeod, we were back and forth on motions and amendments, and she voted on it and she came crying later in the night. She goes, "Oh my gosh, I didn't realize we were on the Second Amendment." And it was because we had not stated the motion again before the vote. And she was very upset that she had voted the wrong way because she didn't understand what the motion was at the time. So you should get in that habit before you speak. Hopefully, your chair has done it. Sometimes you'll hear the clerk or your school board attorney say, "Hey, can you repeat that motion?", particularly when you have amendments or substitutes because it gets very confusing for them. So get in the habit of asking, what is the motion we're voting on, so we all agree for it? And every motion should be, can be reduced to writing if the chair or any school board members want it. So if you're not sure what the motion is, you need to speak up. Can we put that in writing? It's not quite as easy for us to get it on the board, but we have time to get it written. We need to stop the reading for you to look at it, then please let us know and we'll do that because we want to make sure that you're voting on the right, that matter that was proposed to you. Also, if you're the maker of the motion, make sure we have reduced it correctly. Usually, I'm writing or the clerk's writing it, but we may not have said it the way you wanted to do it. So make sure you're asking that question. Five, "Any school board member who shall have made a motion has the liberty to withdraw it with the consent of the second." If you made the motion, nobody seconded it, you can obviously redraw it, but once there's a second, you need to turn to whoever seconded it, ask them for that. But once debate has taken on, now the board, once the debate has come on, the board has assumed responsibility for this question. So at that point, you have to get leave for the entire board to change it at that point. Six, "An amendment or substitute may be moved on any motion." So you've made a motion on the floor, I vote that we go to dinner right now, and then there's a substitute motion. I vote we go to dinner in an hour at that point. So now you're voting on the substitute motion or the amended motion if you're changing the time. You decide that before the original motion. So we, once you've made a decision, if you agree to the second, the substitute motion, that's what you're doing. If you didn't agree to that, you're back to the original motion. And not more than one amendment to an amendment or substitute shall be entertained. Now, I will tell you, we've had a couple problems with this rule in the last year or so. I think I would like you to consider taking it back to PRC and not use both the terms substitute and amendment. Just pick one term, it'll be easier for you because it's gotten confusing a couple times. Well, that was an amendment to this, but this is a substitute motion. So that's something you can think about. How can we make this a little bit easier for you all to understand what the amendment is on the motion? But again, one amendment at a time, so you're not doing multiple amendments.
Quick question. Can you, can you make a distinction there between what is a substitute versus amendment?
Amendment would be, let's go to dinner, instead of going to dinner at 3:30, let's go to dinner at 4:00. A substitute is probably, let's not have dinner tonight, let's do something else. We'll go all night long in the morning. They're close, and that's why I think for your purposes, you might be better with just one, call it one thing, one amendment or motion, because it's really the same thing. But use a substitute is somewhat substantially different than what the amendment was or the initial motion on it. So that's been confusing a couple times, which is why my thinking is that maybe this is something PRC could look at, is a better way to make it clear for all of you.
Okay, so an amendment might be, change the wording on this line, a substitute might be, delete that line and add this line.
Yeah, once it gets a little bit more complicated and changes the nature of the amendment, then it's probably a substitute. Seven, "If the motion under debate is composed of two or more parts, which is so far independent of each other, it is to be susceptible to division," this is really old language, "into several questions, any school board member can have it divided and voted on." I vote that we have dinner tonight, but I vote during our retreat that we have chicken salad for lunch. Okay, those are probably so far apart, we want to separate them. You can break them apart. And sometimes people make really, and I know, I've had that habit too, I'm doing a really long sentence, sometimes break it down into smaller sentences. Anybody can ask for that. Eight, "School board members who consider themselves agreed by a decision of the chair have the privilege to appeal to the school board, and the vote on such appeal shall be taken without debate." So Mr. Culpepper wanted chicken salad at this point, and Mrs. Riggs said, "Mr. Culpepper, we're not even talking about chicken salad right now." So no, you can't ask that question. Then you could say to the rest of you, "Can we talk about chicken salad? I would like you all to vote on it." And then the rest of you would vote on it and override Mrs. Riggs. Or not override Mrs. Riggs. Number nine, "When the chair has commenced taking a vote, there is no further debate or remark shall be admitted unless there is evidently a mistake." So she should say, "Is there any more debate on this question? Any more comments?" At that point, you're going to the vote, so don't start yelling things out, don't ask questions about it, unless we say the question wrong or you're really confused about the procedure. Otherwise, you need to go forward with a vote. If there's a mistake, bring it to the attention of the chair and she'll fix it before you voted on it. Ten is, "A motion for adjournment shall always be in order and shall be decided without debate." So you're tired, it's 1:00 in the morning, I know many of you have been there with me, "I'd like to adjourn this meeting and start again tomorrow morning." We're not debating it, we're not talking about going for two more hours, we're just voting on the adjournment. Except if it cannot be entertained when there's a vote. So if you're in the middle of a vote and you're trying to get, you're afraid it's not gonna go the way you want, you can't say, "Shut the meeting down right now and let's start another day." You have to finish that vote before that adjournment comes in. Eleven, "When a school board member requests to call the question, such action requires a second and a two-thirds vote to limit the debate or force a vote." This is not, a lot of people are used to this, they yell, "Call the question." Calling the question pursuant to your rules is not automatic. You then have to have a, somebody has to second that, and then you have to have two-thirds of the people in the room agree to do that. So it's not an automatic. Some organizations, it's an automatic rule that you have to do that. That is not your rule. So once you do that, remember there's votes that have to happen on that. Twelve, "These special rules of order take precedence over the rules in the Robert's Rule of Order, newly revised, and may be suspended by a two-thirds vote, and they may be amended upon meeting the requirements to amend the bylaws." And I'll look, show you quickly some of the bylaws, but you've had that a couple times where you're amending bylaws during the roll. So these rules are precedent, then Robert's Rules of Order, unless you have a bylaw that speaks specifically to that. Okay, so what's Bylaw 140? This is one that talks about Robert's Rules governs where applicable are not inconsistent with bylaws. Again, points out the special rules are. Standing rules, that is Appendix B. For you, the standing rules are basically the order of your agenda. There aren't a whole lot of procedures in there, so it's, it used to have more procedures in it, you amended it about two years ago, so it's really just a guide for the agenda. But the standing rules themselves also say that you do not have to follow them. So if you wanted to switch the order of information and action one night, you're not bound by that. Those are guidance, but you would have to vote to do that. Standing rules basically, again, set out the order of your agenda for that, but they don't have a lot of procedures in them. If all 11 school board members are present when a motion to amend, suspend, or repeal a bylaw, and bylaws, remember, are different than your policy and regulation, your bylaws are your rules for how you're going to run your organization. So again, if all 11 of you are present when you're asked to amend, suspend, or repeal a bylaw, then it takes seven affirmative votes of school board members to pass that motion. If less than 11 school board members are present, then the affirmative votes of one half plus one school board members present at the meeting, and yes, that does sometimes result in a fractional member, then you round down in this particular bylaw, it requires a motion to pass. Which is why it gets very tricky for us when some of you are on the phone, some of you walk out of the room. So that's why you'll see the clerk and I scramble a lot of times to make sure we know how many of you are needed to get that to pass. I'm sorry.
Ms. Lanetti, I just have a quick question. So on Special Rule of Order 10, we did have a situation where we were here past midnight one time, and there was a motion for adjournment. And so, but as a board, we voted to just continue the meeting because we're almost finished. So in that situation, I'm a little bit confused when we're reading this Special Order 10. "A motion for adjournment shall always be in order and shall be decided without debate." Does that mean that we had at that point to adjourn because there was a call?
No, you do have to vote for it. It's a motion, so you have to vote for it. It just, you just can't say, "Well, you know, I'm tough, I'll go all night long." And this, well, you're not as tough as I think, you're not gonna have that discussion about it. You're just going to vote on it. So if you get a second, then you go forward. If you don't get a second, then you just keep going on with your meeting. Yes. And again, those standing rules, if you want those clarified, that's simple, these are your rules, we can get this clarified. Again, just remember, voting with, it depends on the type, bylaw versus the policy, how many people it takes to pass that and what the rules are. Motion, it's again, a motion we mentioned should be seconded and repeated before it's debated, so everybody's clear on what you're doing. You can ask to be reduced to writing, and again, I think I've mentioned most of these rules. Again, my suggestion would be, since you get confused sometimes with amendments and substitutes, can we come up with one phrase for you or a better definition for what's an amendment or substitute, so that everybody knows going in? And again, not more than one amendment to one amendment. So you can have the main motion, you could have an amendment, and then one under it. So you can go down two steps under your motion, the original motion, that's it. You can't do three or four, so just be careful about that. And again, you can always ask to break it up into parts if you don't understand the motion. But again, once voting starts, you don't go any further on the debate. And again, how to debate, uh, no further comments, please be aware, it's not, unless you get permission from the chair and the rest of the board, don't start making comments about other people's votes on there. And I mentioned the adjournment question and the, um, call the question issue. Lay on the table, there's this very specific procedure for lay on the table. Lay on the table means, I don't want to take it up today, but lay on the table means you have to, we're not going to take it up this time, but we have to take it up at the next meeting. So if you want to use this particular motion, you probably want to come talk to me ahead of time. Is this something we could move to the next meeting? Because that is a rule, you do have to take it to the next meeting. Unless you make up a different rule for yourself, the general rule is lay on the table means not, not this meeting, but two weeks from now, we will take this up. But be careful, because if you have a special meeting in between, you would have to take it up at that special meeting. So this one is something we have to time. So just before you do that, come talk to me, make sure we're okay on the procedure. Uh, decorum issues, this was a lot about what we talked about two years ago. There was a lot of concern among school board members about, um, treating each other respectfully and coming off. Again, this talks about orderly and regularly transactional school board business. We mentioned this before, by law, you as a body cannot act outside of the entire group getting together. So the purpose of a school board meeting is for you to accomplish the work that you need to accomplish. So it's important that you stay on track, otherwise you will be here every week and you will be here until two or three o'clock in the morning. So party rule and decorum is not just to keep people from speaking out of order, it's to keep you on track. Yeah, and we want to make the open, uh, meetings, a lot of rules in Virginia about open meetings and orderly manners, so everybody can be heard. We want to allow the school board, maybe just, school board members and speakers to speak in order. One of the issues we've seen a couple of times before is people yelling out of order. Your vice chair is supposed to be working with your chair to monitor that, so please respect that. No matter how passionate you are about your issue, it's important that everybody have an opportunity to speak on there. And with, to speak without dis- disruption. So if somebody starts talking, you actually need permission from your chair to cut in. You should ask for permission, but you should also be motioning to your vice chair, she's keeping track of who's next in line. You may have just spoken, and then somebody else gets up and they're speaking against you. You do not automatically have the right to correct them, to address that. It should be the next person in line, you need to wait your turn. There's rarely a reason for somebody to say, well, I need to speak to this right now. But if you do, you're going to have to call for a point of order and ask the chair whether you can speak out of turn. Otherwise, you simply need to wait till your turn comes back up, because that's the fair way. Every one of your school board members has the same opportunity to speak, and they should be able to speak in the order that they were recognized by the vice chair. Again, we also want to make sure that our meetings are accessible to people. You have accessibility rules, you have open meeting rules. So when it's chaotic and people are yelling out of turn, it's very difficult for those people in the audience to see what's going on. For those people at home watching on television, they can't see that. So we need to be careful. It's also, yeah, right now, your setup is pretty big, but in your school board room, you're tight and it's hard to see some things. So it's important that you think about how people who are trying to observe your meeting are able to see it, and that's why order helps a lot. We also, you, you, you do have students at your meetings a lot, you have young children sometimes. So we want to be careful with the inappropriate language and the conduct, particularly while we've got our little ones there coming in. Again, you have all the students that are coming to speak with you, and sometimes they're with us for hours. We want to be careful about the language and setting good examples for them. And it's the chair's responsibility to preserve the decorum inside questions of public order. So things going on in the audience, it's her job to do that. However, remember, she's doing a lot of things up there, she's monitoring motions, she's doing other things. If you see something happening out in the audience or some, something else, you may want to point it out to them because where she's sitting, she may simply not see it because she's addressing one issue, but let us know so that the chair can handle that. Yeah, and some of the common issues we've seen in the last year, it's not inappropriate to use somebody by their first name, but if we want to main decor- maintain decorum in meetings, the better practice is to refer Madam Chair, Dr. Spence, you know, Mr. Culpepper coming on there. I know we slip into first names a lot, but again, usually it means we want them to be formal and respectful, and it sets the right tone about that. So if you can remember to use by their last name, that kind of sets the tone that we want to maintain. As I mentioned before, it's been an ongoing complaint about people calling comments out of order. The chair is trying to control that, but you need to recognize, if you want to speak, get the vice chair's attention, she'll get you in order to do that. Um, a lot of problems with side conversations and communications going on during meetings. You may not recognize it from where you are on there, but we can pick up the back sound on your microphones a lot of times. It makes it hard for people on TV. It can make hard for us sitting there, people trying to listen to that. So try to be careful about your conversations and how they come across on there. It can be disruptive and it picks up on the microphones. It's also, it disrupts the sound on, as we're trying, you'll see the closed caption coming up, that can be difficult to interfere with the microphones. Um, again, trying to seek, um, this is an issue we talked about two years ago. You never have the right to challenge another school board member. You don't, you may not like what they said, you can't turn around them, say, you know, Mrs. Williams, I think what you cooked for dinner was terrible last night, I want to let you know about it. You don't ever have the right to say something like that. You are addressing the issue before you, and you should be treating your colleagues respectfully. And if somebody's not, if you feel like you're being aggrieved by somebody, then they should go to the, to the chair or the vice chair to get, dealing that. You should never be attacking each other personally, you're, you're addressing the issue before you. This is not your personal form to address personal issues. If you think somebody is treating you disrespectfully, then you can ask the chair, Madam Chair, I think this is inappropriate, I'd ask you to deal with school board members so and so, and have them, address them appropriately. And the chair should be monitoring for that. But again, you're, the purpose you're here for is your meeting, address the issues at the meeting. Number of issues we've seen in the last couple of years has been communication devices on there. If you're on your phone doing this, I'm telling you that people are watching you, they see you on TV on there. Now, sometimes you're saying, Kami, I need to make a motion, how do I do this? You know, and I'm like, I'll come up and get you to do that, or, you know, can we move your dan- your workshop, your item down after the workshop? Sometimes that's what you're doing. But other times, you're communicating with people, and this has happened with many elected boards in Virginia in particular, where people then foie it. If you are on your device and you're communicating during the meeting, they foie it, then Mr. Sutton and I are going to have to go find and look at that information on there. So be careful, people are watching you. We get these questions after most meetings up there, who was on the phone with, what were they saying, what were the notes? If you're passing notes to each other, if that was done in your official capacity about a motion, then that might be a, uh, meeting note that I have to locate and turn over. So be aware that people can see you and they're doing that. And again, be careful, because if you're probably communicating to me, it's one thing if you said, you know, to your child, please go to bed and do your homework, that's not going to be an issue. But if you're saying, you know, let's, um, try, let's get three people to vote against this on that, that is in your capacity as a school board member, and that's going to be an issue for us. Right now in Virginia, the law is not clear about electronic communications, whether three or more of you are communicating at one time. Does that constitute electronic meeting? That has been something for twenty years, they've been saying that that is a potential that could happen. That type of thing, if it looks like a couple of you communicating together, depending on how simultaneous it is, we could face a lawsuit eventually if somebody asks, were you holding a second meeting during the, that the public couldn't see? Again, most of the time, they can't see that, but in a meeting where they're watching you, doing your equi- using your equipment, please, please think about that before you do that. Um, one of the other disruptive issues is coming-
Mr. Callen had a question a minute ago, I'm sorry.
In order to make sure I'm following the protocol, is it correct understanding that any and all communication from me should only be directed to the chair and never to any one of the associates?
That's, that's general procedure, yes. You say, Madam Chair, I'd like to address this issue, um, Madam Chair, she gives you the permission to speak at that point, so, because she's controlling the room. Some years, we're really good at this, other years, we're not, and that's where it becomes a problem, so. And again, failing to prepare for a meeting by reading the agenda materials. When you're off in your agenda materials, you don't know where we are, the order, you're not prepared for them, um, or you don't realize how many, how long it's going to take to do something, that's also disruptive to a meeting. So please make sure you look at your agenda materials ahead of time. If you have not read them and they have to spend a lot of time talking about them because you're not prepared, obviously that's your right as a school board member, but it's also not efficient for them, or coming in late to a meeting, ask them to repeat on it. So again, decorum issues are, uh, uh, part of that is preparation. I'm not going to spend a lot of time with this, but bylaw one thirty deals with how do you make an adoption, amendment, repeal to a bylaw? How do you suspend a bylaw? This may be something you want to look at. You, we did this, I want to say, we didn't do it this fall, this was not what we changed. We did it about two years ago, there was a lot of discussion about this one, because you wanted to suspend during a meeting. You may want to familiarize yourself with bylaw one thirty. If during a meeting, you don't like how something's conducted, there is a way you could suspend the bylaw for a portion of the meeting or, or for the whole meeting on there. You just need to know, there's notification rolls on it. So if all the school board members are notified before the meeting, or if all of them are present in the meeting, all eleven of you are here, it only requires one half plus one to do that. Otherwise, you have to do the seven folks on there, so you could have everybody here. It's a little bit complicated to cover at this time period at this point, but remember, if you need to suspend during a meeting, we'll go over that procedure with you, but talk to me ahead of time. Uh, you can suspend a bylaw during a meeting, but we have to make sure you've had the appropriate notice. It's actually better if you know beforehand that you're going to have to suspend a bylaw during a meeting, if you let your colleagues know. Because if you've done that, then they've had notice, they know to be here, they've had time to think about it. Real quick, one thirty-two is policies. So bylaws are your rules, policies are what you set for the school division to follow. So there are a couple of rules on bylaws that they, a, a policy change. Policies have to be reviewed by the school administration, they have to be signed off, they also have to come through me to be signed off to make sure they're legally sufficient. The standards of accreditation in Virginia require that every five years, you have to review the, the policies. You've heard me mention this to you a couple of times, we came up with a work plan about seven years ago. We have finally completed all that, we've gotten you through, and we did the second round for bylaws. So now your bylaws have completed their current five-year check, but all these policies have to go through. So if you ask, why Kami, are we keep bringing me policies every week? It's so that you stay in compliance with the standards of accreditation, because you have so many of them on there. So these are the rules on that, you'll see some of the procedure for it. We take them through the policy review committee, they do the bulk of the work to get these in shape and get them up to you. But if for some reason you don't go to them, you can't submit them in writing at a meeting on there and vote for adoption, but it has to be at a second meeting. So if you decide, I don't want to go through the policy review committee, but I want to submit this policy in, you cannot get it approved that at that particular meeting unless the rest of the board agrees this is so important. Otherwise, you have to introduce it and it goes to another meeting for, again, refers, uh, requires an affirmative vote of majority of school board members. So unlike a bylaw, this just needs affirmative vote of the majority of the school board members who are present at a meeting, that's just for a bo- for a policy. Um, you can suspend a policy, similar procedure on this one. One of the rules you put in two years ago for bylaw suspension, uh, policy suspension is that you were to give eight hours notice of a proposed suspension, so that people can look at it ahead of time before the meeting. Or you can have a unanimous vote of the school board members who are present at the meeting if you didn't get the written notice ahead of time. So that's a special rule involving suspension of a policy at a school board meeting. One thirty-nine, I'm not going to go through a whole lot of this, but this was your agenda preparation and notice. You changed your procedure about two years ago, you're, you were used to have a rotating agenda planning committee. You now have a set agenda preparation, that is your chair, your vice chair, and your superintendent. Any school board member can have, uh, asked to have something on the agenda, you just require, request that from your chair or your vice chair. But then the vice chair and the chair, they should know what ti- what's coming up on the agenda, if there's going to be enough time. So they will get back to you and say, look, that's a really long issue, and we have twenty policies we've got to cover and a lot of speakers. Can we move this to another meeting? They're going to try to work it out with you. If they can't work it out with you, you as a school board member have a right at the beginning of the meeting to make a motion in the meeting and ask that they amend the agenda to add your agenda item on that. So that should happen during the agenda approval process, you can bring that up. So that procedure is put in place so that you cannot be shut out, you still have the right to have an entire board rule on. Once the board has ruled on it, if they have not agreed to your agenda item, it does not go on. You would need to go back to the chair and the vice chair for another agenda. Okay, this time, Mrs. Manning had a handout that I gave you, I think this one, Agenda Policy. These were rules that she pulled out from Roberts Rules of Order, but she can talk to you about why she thought these were important.
Thank you, Kami. First, I'd like to say that I think it would be very helpful if we all had a copy of the Roberts Rules of Order newly revised edition. I have a copy, I know Ms. Brown has a copy, perhaps that's something that our chair could get for us. Um, it's in our, um, bylaws that we should, um, be using those. So perhaps that's something, if you want a copy, you could request it from the, the clerk. Our bylaw does say Roberts Rules of Order newly revised, current edition shall govern the school board in all cases that are applicable, that are not inconsistent with, uh, our, our bylaws that we've adopted. So in the absence of our bylaws that we have, um, we are to use Roberts Rules of Order. Now, we can change that, we could adopt our own bylaws if we don't like what's in Roberts Rules of Order. But until we do adopt those, we are to be governed by Roberts Rules of Order in the absence of it being addressed in our own bylaws. Um, Kami's addressed, uh, about half of what's in my document here, but I'll highlight a few that I don't know that we touched on. If you go to four twenty-seven, so in Roberts Rules of Order, it's always referenced as to location. Um, I think it might be like a chapter four and, and go to section twenty-seven. Um, so immediately after stating the question, the chair turns toward the maker of the motion to see if he wants to be assigned the floor. So if, um, Mr. Culpepper made the motion, the chair should give him the opportunity to be the first speaker to the motion. He doesn't have to be, but the opportunity should be afforded to him. And then, as Kami said, the motion then becomes the property of the assembly once a second has been made, and that can't be withdrawn without approval from the full body. Uh, four twenty-eight, a member who desires to speak must obtain the floor. Um, and Roberts Rules of Order states that each member has the right to speak twice on a question, but cannot speak a second time while others are still waiting to speak who haven't spoken at this time.
I would point out that, that actually was a rule you had in a couple of years ago. It was very, and it was for a very long time you had that rule in there. So you might want to, you took it out two years ago, but that was something that the school board had in for many, many years.
Yeah, I think there were a lot of help, I think a lot of these things were in our previous bylaws that were removed, thank you, Kami. So, so that's something that we need to consider as well. And again, if, you know, these are things that we want to adopt in our bylaws, we can do so. And Roberts Rules also says that a member may not speak more than twice on one item. Um, four twenty-nine says, in the absence of rules, which I couldn't find any rules on this in our bylaws, so this should be what we use. No one can speak longer than ten minutes on one topic total. Speakers must address their remarks, Kami touched on this in a courteous tone. Um, I know I'm guilty of, of not doing this, and I think that this would be a good habit for us to get in. When we're speaking, we should say, Madam Chair, and, and just address, as we are addressing her, I think that could help us, and especially if we're in heated topics that we feel very passionately about, we should say, Madam Chair, and then make our comments. And Ms. Riggs, you know, I would be fine if I forget to say that and you say, you, you correct me. You know, because I think it's a good habit for us to get into. Um, because we shouldn't, as Kami mentioned, we shouldn't be speaking to one another, we're speaking to the chair. And then debate must be confined to the merits of the pending question. We shouldn't be talking about, talking about different questions. If there's a substitute on the table, we should be talking about the substitute, not the main motion or any other topic. Um, when the debate appears to be closed, the chair should then say, are you ready for the question, or is there further debate? And then if there's not, she is supposed to, um, proceed to put that question to the vote after restating the motion. And once she does that, no more debate takes place, I can't, I think Kami touched on that. And any member may request any motion to be put in writing. That is a part of our Appendix A, it's not something that can be debated, it must be done. So if, um, someone makes a substitute motion, we don't have that in writing, we have to stop the meeting and, and get it put in writing, we've done that before. Now, the chair rules on these things. If someone believes that the chair has made an unfair ruling, they can appeal that decision to the board by challenging the ruling of the chair, and that can be put up for a vote as well. Kami went through, um, some in this next section about an amendment to the motion and the substitute motion. And I agree that perhaps we should clarify this in our bylaws about, because an amendment to me is you change just a very tiny part of the motion, it doesn't change the substance of the motion. Um, and, and, you know, we've done that before, but a substitute motion takes precedent, and you have to vote on that particular item before you can vote on a main motion. So you can review that on your own and look at Roberts Rules of Order on that as well. Some additional forms of subsidiary motions I've listed as well, and you can look in Roberts Rules of Order to find more detail on that. Roberts Rules of Order is very extensive, so it would, we could, we could be here for days going through all the different options that you can make in a meeting. days going through all the different options that you can make in a meeting. One last one I thought was interesting that I don't think we've ever used before, but if someone makes a main motion and you don't want that motion to be heard or voted on at all, prior to a second taking place and it being put forth to the body, you can raise an objection to the consideration of the question. It has to be done before debate has begun or any subsidiary motion. And that can come up for a vote, you can kill that motion, but it has to be a two-thirds vote. So those are the highlights that I thought could be helpful to running our meetings. I'll see if I can have an answer. Your microphone.
Yes, you may.
On E, it says, after the amendment is voted on, then the main motion is taken up. But either in the amended form of amendment, if the amendment is passed, or the original form. Kami, can you speak to that? Because I was under the assumption that if you voted on the amendment, then the amendment is, that takes place of the main motion, unless it's something that is just a minimal.
Yeah, I think, and I've had this up, my impression is if I'd like to amend the question to be dinner at four instead of dinner at four thirty at that point, so you're vote, that's what you want to vote on. You do as a board to have a tendency to say, we've already voted on that. You're actually just bringing up that question, can we make the question to read at four thirty? And we agree to, we've agreed that that's going to be the question. That would be something that, and I've seen this happen a number of times with this board, that maybe we could clarify how to do that. If the amendment solves the problem, then you don't vote a second time, but actually you're just changing, you're amending the question to be, this is a question on the floor. So it requires, law's right, it required two votes, but I think you could clarify that. That would be a good example of something we could make easier for you.
Yeah, I think this may be.
That might be something then that we might need to clarify in policy.
Yes, I would agree with that.
To me, that's something that would be good for PRC to kick around, because there's a couple scenarios you would want to work that might take a little time to think through that we get it all correct. I think you could make it easier for yourselves if you just stated whether it resolves the problem or not.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We need to move on. Thank you both. Okay, so our next is the School Board Committee Assignments Review for term ending June 30th, 2023. So I would like to start with this. And I will say this again in our main meeting, okay? But I just want to give you guys a heads up. During the past two weeks, there has been a lot of discussion regarding the appointments to fill the vacancies on the school board committees, boards and organizations that were created as a result of the 2022 elections. Please note that all school board committees, boards, and organizations are important to the continued success of this school board and the school division. During their terms of office, school board members should expect to rotate through different committee appointments. I would hope that each school board member uses their opportunities to learn about multitude and diversity of operations that are needed to operate the school division. Each school board member was elected to bring their experience and knowledge to the school board and should bring those same skills to any committee appointment. If an appointment this year is not to a committee, board, or organization that you had hoped to serve on, I hope that you will still strive to bring your experience and skills to your assigned committee, board, or organization for the remainder of the school year. We will have the opportunity during the summer to reevaluate the committee, board, and organization appointments for the next fiscal year. That being said, I have been unable to come to any mutual resolution regarding the appointments to fill the two vacancies on the policy review committee for the remainder of the school year. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion to propose a procedure for how the entire school board will vote to choose the school board members who will fill the two vacancies on the policy review committee. So I'd like for you to listen, and you will get this form as well. So if, please take one and pass it down. Okay, does everyone have one? I move that the two vacant committee member positions on the policy review committee be filled in the following method. One, there are three named candidates for the two vacancies on the policy review committee, Mrs. Brown, Mrs. Manning, and Mrs. Owens. Every school board member may commit one time, that's two. Three, the chair will then state the name of each committee, each candidate, and the call for the vote to begin. Four, each school board member, present or online, will be called upon to state the candidate that the school board member chooses to serve on the policy review committee. Five, voting will be done alphabetically. Six, the clerk and the school board attorney will then tally and announce the votes for each candidate. Seven, the two school board members with the highest number of votes, or if there is a tie among two candidates for the highest number of votes, will be appointed to fill the vacancies on the policy review committee. Eight, if the three candidates receive the same amount of votes, which is a tie, then no candidates will be declared the winner, and the school board will vote again. Nine, if one candidate gets the highest votes, then that candidate will be appointed to the policy review committee. Ten, if there is a tie among the other two candidates for the next highest votes, then there will be another vote to choose one of the remaining candidates for the policy review committee. Eleven, when one candidate receives the highest votes for the remaining slot, that candidate will be appointed to fill the second vacancy on the committee. Do I, and I will ask for a motion, I won't do it now, we will do it when the voting happens under action, and we will have discussion then. I need discussion now. We need to move on, so I don't want to make it long. We have two major important presentations, and so they are lengthy. Ms. Melnick?
I'm willing to discuss this later, but I just, I just.
Please, please don't get in a long discussion now.
I won't get in a long discussion.
Because we'll do it up on the dais.
I was surprised by this. I did not know until I saw it, until I saw this on the agenda, and we do have a bylaw that governs this, 128. And the chair is supposed to bring forward a recommendation, and every board member has the opportunity to vote yea or nay, and so that's the way I thought this was going to go, and I'll leave it there and we can discuss it again. So I'm just kind of surprised by all of this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson and then Ms. Manning.
I'm not, I'm sorry. I show up as Anderson.
Sorry, sorry, okay, then Ms. Manning.
Yeah, I just find this unnecessarily confusing. I mean, I'm going to have to review this a few times, because, I mean, obviously there's some strategy here by who you vote for, and I just, I don't understand why we can't put the three nominees up for a yea or nay vote. I think that would be a whole lot easier, and I just don't.
I had come up with this because I thought it was a quicker way to do it, that's why.
Okay, it's very confusing to me.
I'm Kami.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yeah. No, I agree with that, this is a, this is confusing, and the statement that it requires some tactics to figure out what will happen kind of points out that I don't think it's the best way to do it. I think everybody's intent should be clearly stated and not be confused by the procedure. So if we can do it one at a time, I think that's a better method.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do think this is a little bit confusing, and because there are two committee assignments that we're voting on, I think we should be able to be afforded the opportunity to vote for two of our colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Owens?
I hadn't selected, you know, gone in the queue, because I figured the comments are probably best left for the meeting. But again, kind of echoing, I guess, Ms. Melnick, I am surprised by the process, and I don't think surprise by process is what we should be looking for on the board. It's kind of the opposite of transparency. If we have a process for how this is supposed to happen, that includes recommendations coming down, an up or down vote, and then that person, by our review today, special rule eight, if that person feels aggrieved, that is when they bring it to the board for a full vote. And so I'm not excited by this, but I'm open to continuing the conversation and having more discussion at the main meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next thing, I just wanted to make a point is, it has been brought to our attention by our HR chief, to Dr. Robertson and to Dr. Spence and I, that there's, and you guys have probably seen this too, with the appointments that are being made by Dr. Spence, if you've noticed, they've had to wait a long time sometimes. And so we are going to send this to the PRC, because as you noted today, Ms. Lynetti told us that our agenda planning comes through the PRC with the procedures of it. So we're, they were talking, maybe possibly putting it down, putting it up to, the appointments being moved to student, employee, and public awards during that time, right after that, rather than waiting until like when we do it, because then they have to go through that whole meeting, that's a long time to wait. So we're going to be, you know, presenting it to, or sending it down to PRC to see what they think about it. I'd like to do it tonight, but I think it needs to go to them. I mean, what do you guys think? If you want to say something real quick? Ms. Melnick?
Well, I would hope that at the start of the formal meeting, that someone can make a motion to amend the agenda, and that we move it there for this evening, because clearly we have a lot to discuss, and we have forty-one speakers.
I don't know what time Mrs. Woodhouse asked them to come, what time did you ask them to come tonight, Mrs. Woodhouse? So it might make a difference tonight, I don't know.
If it's the will of the board to approve, we can definitely contact our candidates. We have asked them to show up tonight at eight o'clock, and it was causing a conflict with some, but again, they like being recognized, and we would want them to continue to be recognized, maybe just in a little different fashion.
Anybody else?
I'm just.
Ms. Dr. Spence?
May I just suggest we leave it where it is tonight and work this out through the PRC?
Yeah, I think it's kind of soon, so, I mean, there are a lot of speakers tonight, but sorry about that, yeah.
There's also the issue with voting on them, so we need to get that in an arrangement so you could vote where you would normally be voting on them, so that's why we want to correct the bylaw for you.
So that, you know, we're asking that to be, you know, on your agenda for PRC? Okay, so B, our next item on our workshop is Compass to 2025 update.
Will we have food?
I ask you what I asked Mrs. Lynetti.
Yes.
Okay?
Don't blow my cover with the new board.
You're brilliant, we know that, so you know this back and forward, you know? But slow down, please, because this is very confusing and very intricate. So if you can go a little slower, that will help all of us.
You're stealing my thunder. I've been practicing and watching videos. I'll tell you some tips. I clocked myself, one of the tips was to clock yourself in regular speech, and I was at two fifty, two hundred and fifty words a minute, so I'm going to slow it down.
Beat that, we're going to.
I know she's the winner. Well, good afternoon, after all of that as an introduction. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Weems, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. My name is Lisa Baniki, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Executive Director for Planning, Innovation, and Accountability here in the school division. And I'm here to provide an update on our strategic framework, Compass to 2025. Now, in our time together, I will provide a summary of the key indicators we use to monitor our progress on the strategic framework, which we refer to as navigational markers. I will also provide updates on our strategic priorities for the current school year, as well as revisions to the framework. As a reminder, our navigational markers are high-level indicators aligned to each of the goals in our strategic framework. They were developed as part of the strategic planning process, used to create Compass to 2025, and involved a wide variety of stakeholders. I think it's important to note that the data I'll be summarizing is reviewed on an ongoing basis as they become available, and a final summary of the information is provided on an annual basis. The data I'll be sharing today is from the 2021-2022 school year, and as a reminder, last school year was marked by notable absences on the part of staff and students as a result of the illnesses associated with COVID-19. This was not unique to Virginia Beach, but did impact some of our metrics. For the purposes of summarizing the navigational markers, the emphasis will be on comparisons between last year and the year prior, with differences noted as indicated on this slide. I will also highlight any notable changes observed when examining the data by student group. Your agenda materials contain a copy of the annual snapshot, a multiple-year report for results overall, and a multiple-year report for student groups. Although not the focus of today's summary, there are differences between student groups that continue to highlight our need to remain focused on educational equity. Our first goal area is educational excellence. What we see here are slight improvements in reading on grade level, with notable increases for Asian and multiracial students in grades three, as well as for multiracial students and students with disabilities in grade nine. As you may recall from a presentation on the Standards of Learning, or SOL assessments, the passing rates earlier this year, the primary story of our results from the state assessment was that our rates were improved from the prior year, where participation was lower than typical, and overall, we outperformed the state and many of our comparable divisions, but we did not achieve pre-pandemic levels of performance. We maintained the percentages of secondary students enrolling and successfully completing advanced coursework, and saw high percentages of students reporting proficiency in critical thinking and problem solving despite slight decreases. We also maintained a high on-time graduation rate of ninety-five percent. Goal two of our framework focused on student well-being, and includes measures of school climate, social-emotional learning, attendance, and participation in clubs and community service. Results from the 2021-2022 school year indicate that a high percentage of stakeholders reported that their school or workplace was safe and welcoming, but lower agreement for inclusiveness was observed among students and staff. Although overall, there were only slight to small decreases observed when compared to the prior year, there were notable decreases for Black students on all three of these items, and a notable decrease for Hispanic students when rating how safe and welcoming their school was. The agreement percentages were still relatively high, with the lowest being eighty percent. We also saw high percentages of agreement for most social-emotional learning, or SEL skills, with slight to small decreases compared to the prior year. Self-management was the only area that was not at an agreement level of eighty percent or higher. We also experienced a notable decrease in the percentage of students with a ninety percent or higher attendance rate, and this notable decrease was observed for all groups except Asian students. There was a slight decrease in students reporting a sense of belonging to their school. We did observe a notable increase in participation in extracurricular activities and clubs, as well as in the area of community service overall, and for each student group. Goal three. Goal three focuses on student ownership of learning for the purpose of helping them create a plan for pursuing their future goals. In Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Twenty Two, more than eighty-two percent of students agreed that the academic and career planning process helped them make informed decisions about their future options, which was a small increase over the prior year. A small decrease was observed among parents responding to this item. A high percentage of students reported engaging in goal-setting to support their learning and future plans and that they were engaged in their learning. Slight increases for both items were noted. Notable increases were observed for the percentage of students graduating with industry certifications and demonstrating college career and civic readiness as defined by the state. Notable increases were observed overall and for each student group, with the largest increases observed for students with disabilities. And the final marker in this goal area, college enrollment rate, is not yet available from the National Student Data Clearinghouse. The fourth goal of Compass to Twenty Twenty Five focuses on hiring and supporting an exemplary diversified workforce. Looking at the data, we see that relative to our student population, larger percentages of our instructional staff and administrators are white. And when looking at student group data, the smallest difference observed was between the percentage of Black students and administrators. The pattern was similar to the prior year. When we look at the ranking for teacher salaries for different years of experience, we see an improvement in the rank for teachers with ten years of experience, moving from five to three compared to our surrounding school divisions. The rankings for the health deductibles for individuals and families decreased to seven out of seven. Higher percentages of staff reported positive perceptions of professional learning and job satisfaction, but both items had notable decreases from the previous year. As a reminder, professional learning opportunities were put on hold during the Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Two school year because of challenges related to staff absences. The absences also required more school-based and central office staff to serve as substitutes. The challenges of the Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Two school year were also reflected in a decrease in the teacher retention rate by two percentage points. The percentage of staff with advanced degrees and national board certification was the same as the year prior. Goal five focuses on mutually supportive partnerships. Compared to the Twenty Twenty, Twenty Twenty One school year, there was a notable decrease in the percentage of families aware of events, programs and resources. Among parents and guardians indicating that they participated in division-sponsored events or programs, a high percentage expressed satisfaction, though there was a small decrease noted compared to the prior year. There was also a reduction in the number of partnerships in Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Twenty Two that resulted when the Office of Community Engagement inventoried their partnerships and found that several of them represented businesses and organizations that had closed during the pandemic. There was, however, a notable increase in the percentage of partners expressing satisfaction with their partnerships, as well as a small increase in the percentage of schools expressing satisfaction. Both agreement percentages were above ninety percent. We also saw a notable increase in the percentage of students participating in work-based or service-based learning. Now, the final goal in the framework focuses on organizational effectiveness and efficiency. The accreditation data reported on the navigational markers are based on data from the Two Thousand Eighteen, Two Thousand Nineteen school year, because ratings were waived in Twenty Twenty One and Twenty Twenty Two because of the pandemic. During the Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Twenty Two school year, we saw a notable decrease in the percentage of staff expressing satisfaction with central office communication. Among school-based staff, there was also a notable decrease in satisfaction with central office assistants. The decrease among non-school-based staff was small. Again, we believe that the challenges associated with providing staff coverage during the Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Twenty Two school year had a large impact on perceptions of satisfaction. A review of the remaining indicators focused on operational targets revealed that we met all but two of them. We did not meet the target for satisfactory building inspection custodial reports because of issues related to staffing and we did not decrease our energy consumption in Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Twenty Two because it was lower the year prior due to building closures. Now, monitoring our progress on our navigational markers is not the only way that we keep ourselves on track for accomplishing the vision outlined in Compass to Twenty Twenty Five. As you know, we also create an annual strategic action agenda, where we identify key priorities for schools for the year. It involves mapping out the route and taking current conditions into consideration. Now, as a reminder, in July of this past year, I shared with the board the Compass to Twenty Twenty Five Strategic Action Agenda for Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three. And as you may recall, the agenda continues the focus from the prior year on three big areas: educational equity, integrated systems of support and creating future-ready students. But our experiences from the Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Twenty Two school year made us want to call out the importance of supporting staff and celebrating success. We recognize that this is a foundation from which all other work is built. On the following slides, I'll provide a brief update for each area to address work since the beginning of the year. One way that we're working to support staff and celebrate success is by leveraging the science of hope. There's a growing body of research on this topic that hope matters and that it's more than wish- wishful thinking, that it's actually a cognitive practice that involves the intentional act of setting goals and working toward them with purpose. Or put another way, hope is the belief that your future can be brighter and better than your past and that you have a role in making it better. It is an ongoing focus of professional learning for administrators this year and we've been learning strategies for cultivating hope among staff and students. Another way we've been working to support staff is by engaging in a variety of advisory groups and offering more opportunities for staff to provide input into the operations of the School Division. Listed on this slide are some of the groups we've engaged around questions like, what successes and challenges have you encountered when implementing the Strategic Action Agenda? Are the expectations for schools clear and manageable? Do schools have the support they need to implement these actions? What are the pain points people are experiencing? What, if anything, should be removed from your plate? What do you see as glows and grows for the division? We are in turn working with various groups to identify potential solutions to identified challenges. The next focus area on our Strategic Action Agenda is educational equity. We define this as fostering a barrier-free environment whereby all students have the opportunity to benefit from the establishment of high standards and the provision of access, support, effective and inclusive learning environments and resources required for a high-quality education. The big updates related to this focus area include the approval of the Division's Equity Plan by the School Board this past October. Following the approval of the plan, we've had several meetings of key central office staff to complete a responsibility assessment matrix, more specifically a RACI matrix purpose used for project management. A RACI matrix lists all of the key players on a project and their level of involvement in each task, denoted with an R for responsible or an A for accountable or a C for consulted or an I for informed. Work is well underway and we are monitoring progress and sharing updates via a shared workspace using the Microsoft Planner app with monthly check-ins. One strategy in the recently adopted Equity Plan is to publish a data dashboard and it includes action steps of gathering feedback on the measures proposed in the plan for the purpose of finalizing them. We are in the process of gathering feedback from the groups reflected on this slide, after which we will move forward with identifying the best format for sharing the Equity Dashboard. Our next focus area is Integrated Systems of Support, which is defined as the integration of the processes used to proactively and responsibly support the needs of students and includes the Student Response Team Process, Section 504, and the Special Education Committee. We'll refer to that as the SEC from time to time, Special Education Committee. It involves addressing students' academic, social, emotional and behavioral needs with progressively more intensive instruction and interventions. Our priorities for this year include continuing to strengthen Tier One instruction, that is the instruction that all students receive. And one way we've done that is by providing schools with instructional planning considerations for students with disabilities, English as a second language learners and gifted students. We've also been leveraging building-level literacy and math coaches to strengthen instruction on our classrooms. And in addition, the Department of Teaching and Learning invited applications from elementary literacy leaders to serve on an advisory committee. This committee is working closely with the Elementary Teaching and Learning Language Arts Team to provide input and feedback regarding the Literacy Leader Plan and professional learning opportunities provided throughout the school year. Several new resources were developed and provided to schools, including a one-page overview of Integrated Systems of Support with links to important resources for acci- accessing, analyzing and responding to data. This includes use of Unified Insights, our student data analytics platform, and a newly revised data review protocol for team use. In addition, schools have been provided with resources to support improving student attendance, including a description of tiered supports, an attendance support plan document and links to external sources of information related to student attendance. To further support our work in SEL, all schools are using a software program, Panorama Education, to administer SEL surveys to gather important information to inform their practices and meet student needs. In addition, select classroom teachers are serving as what we call SEL Integration Fellows. They're working to identify high-impact strategies and practices to serve as exemplars for quality SEL integration. The final focus area on the Action Agenda is creating future-ready students, which we define as students exhibiting the attributes outlined in our graduate profile. But don't let the word graduate fool you. The work of creating future-ready students starts in elementary school by building a strong foundation of literacy and numeracy skills, which is why we have such a strong focus on Tier One instruction. This year, elementary school-based coaches are providing professional learning in how to identify what we call works of substance, which we define as evidence of learning that is substantive, rigorous, relevant and real-world, aligned to grade-level content in the curriculum for the purpose of identifying exemplars as we build students' capacity to be curators of their own learning. At the middle school level, we are expanding the impact of the Advancement Via Individual Determination, or AVID program. This program provides scaffolded support that educators and students need to encourage college and career readiness and success. By the end of the year, our goal is that all middle schools will achieve certification status and till two will recertify as national demonstration sites. AVID professional learning is also being provided to fourteen teachers at each of our middle schools to effectively implement the program division-wide. At the high school level, schools are implementing practices to help students become curators of works of substance that demonstrate their learning. All high schools are engaging in a design process with works of substance as the focus. This design process involves the creation of a storyboard and final exhibition of learning among our high schools. We are also continuing to scale service-based learning and work-based learning by articulating standards, procedures, tools and resources to streamline how field experiences are secured, offered, managed and reported. The final portion of today's update focuses on revisions to the strategies included in Compass to Twenty Twenty Five. And you have a copy of that in your materials. You may not realize it, I do, but this month marks the midway point in our five-year strategic plan. And and the planning process for the next strategic framework will actually begin this coming fall. So, yes, oh, who said, oh, gosh? Okay. Yeah, it has been it has been our practice to revisit our framework at about the halfway mark to determine if there are strategies that may need revising based on learning and progress. In addition, we entered a global pandemic just as we were launching Compass to Twenty Twenty Five. So we wanted to ensure that the strategies in the framework are still applicable for where we find ourselves today. Also, the School Board adopted an Equity Plan with high-leverage strategies aligned to each of the goal areas in the framework. And we want people to understand that those strategies are part of our strategic framework. So we added them in and noted them using asterisks on the handout that you see. And finally, the state has recently required that school divisions articulate a plan for inclusive practices to support students with disabilities. We have highlighted inclusive strategies in our framework with a plus sign. We did this because we think it is critical to have a unified plan to set direction for the School Division. On the following slides, I will highlight the minor revisions made to the strategies in the framework based on meetings with key strategy leads, central and central office staff that oversee the work. So under Goal One, Educational Excellence, we elected to add a strategy, Strategy Two. And so, one second. In your handouts, it's the handout that looks like this. Should be attached to your PowerPoint slides. Okay. Which I'll be referring to strategies as helpful. So we elected to add a strategy, Strategy Two, focused on evidence-based literacy instruction. As a school division, we want to continue to be well-positioned to fully enact the Virginia Literacy Act, which was passed during the Twenty Twenty Two Legislative Session. Under Goal One, we also added language to Strategy Four to emphasize improving enrollment in more advanced mathematics courses, as well as calling out inclusive teaching practices that benefit all students in Strategy Seven. We also removed a strategy focused on student access and opportunities for advanced-level coursework, but only because there were several Equity Strategies added under Goal Three that address this. For Goal Two, Student Wellbeing, we wanted to take this opportunity to clarify Strategy Eight, which is focused on addressing behavioral and mental health needs. We changed the word evaluate that was in that particular strategy to addressing identified needs and providing options. We also added a strategy, Strategy Ten, focused on improving student attendance. Although most of our drop in attendance that we observed is attributed to student illness, we want to make sure we are doing all we can to support student attendance. For Goal Three, Student Ownership of Learning, we wanted to make a more explicit link between what we refer to as transformational learning and the development of future-ready learners in Strategy Six. So in a nutshell, transformational learning is learning that uses student-centered practices to foster student agency and provides them with opportunities to create and apply new knowledge across contexts. We also revised language in Strategy Seven related to the use and purpose of technology. Initially, the language was to expand technology use and we certainly did that over the last several years with the pandemic. But now we think the emphasis should be on balancing its use and viewing it as a tool for students to demonstrate their learning. For Goal Four, Exemplary Diversified Workforce, we made a minor revision to Strategy Seven to include an emphasis on increasing awareness of opportunities around Grow Your Own Programs and tuition reimbursement. For Goal Five, Mutually Supportive Partnerships, we added language to existing strategies to make the work involved more explicit and also added a strategy focused on listening and responding to community feedback. And finally, for Goal Six, Organizational Effectiveness and Efficiency, we made one minor addition to Strategy Five to reflect the Division's ongoing commitment to sustainability. Later this week, we'll be posting the navigational markers and revised strategic framework to the VB Schools website. We'll also start the process of developing the Strategic Action Agenda for the Twenty Twenty Three, Twenty Twenty Four school year. And finally, recognizing that the work I've presented this afternoon represents just the tip of the iceberg, I wanted to highlight upcoming opportunities where the School Board will receive more in-depth information on some of the most salient components of our priorities, including an update on the AVID program on March fourteenth, an update on high school scheduling model on March twenty-eighth, and of course, an end-of-year update on Compass to Twenty Twenty Five at the July retreat. I thank you for your time this afternoon and for your support of the division's strategic framework. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Mr. Callen? Okay, Ms. Franklin. Sorry, I thought she said Michael.
It's okay. Thank you, Ms. Baniki. And I wanted to just, I had the advantage of being in the PPMC meeting, and so I had just asked a few questions, and I think that they were good to ask here as well in front of the whole board. On page three, on the navigational marker summary for 2122, I had actually asked you at the PPMC meeting, why do we feel like there was a notable decrease for Black and Hispanic students?
Right. And so, we don't have a complete answer, but it is a question that schools are digging deeper into their data with. And it is a reason why we have a continued focus on SEL skills and the sense of belonging within our buildings. I know that's not quite the satisfactory, but trying to dig deeper into, what is it?
Yeah, and I just wanted them to know that you were, you know, addressing that and looking at that as well. And then the high percentage of agreement that self-management is, you know, is... There's a reasoning for that self-management piece having a slight decrease, and we feel like that is also related to the pandemic and being at home and...
And it has been something of the five areas, it has consistently been the lower of the areas, self-management. So it's something we're certainly putting some effort into.
Right. And then on page four, slide seven, probably because you were talking at the 251 words per minute at the meeting.
Didn't I do a better job?
You did a great job, though. You did a great job.
Nothing like sending positive feedback. Sure, sure. Yeah, slide seven.
You're doing a great job. I did, I forgot to ask you, though, in the four categories there, I'm not sure, can I just be self-serving here? Where is Asian and Pacific Islander in that grouping of categories for demographics?
Across the top, we take the largest, the four largest.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, so I did not ask.
So you're not wrong, and they're not reflected there. But we do, we, there's data that exists beyond this that we look at at a more fine-grained level. This is for the reporting of publicly reporting out, yeah.
Okay, okay. And then, lastly, slide eight on that same page four. We had just talked about possibly utilizing the PTSA and some other groups to disseminate information so that families are more aware of events, programs, and resources out there. And that was my suggestion at PPMC, is that we start utilizing them a little bit more because it's always good when the parents are already there, speaking as a PTSA president, when parents are already there to already use that opportunity to get information out about, you know, resources and things that they might want to know. So, that was a recommendation. Thank you.
Ms. Baniki?
Thank you. So on slide four, page four, and then there's a blow-up version of it in the back for those who can't see the writing there. Goal One, Educational Excellence. So, a couple of questions there. It says, it gives the proficiency ratings, and I thought in the past we usually used, like, the reading index or DRA to determine proficiency.
We have that above. Above is students reading on grade level, and that's where we would use the RI.
Oh, okay.
So we have a measure that is reading on grade level, and we use the RI for that. And then these measures about proficiency in reading math and writing, you'll see those are SOL-specific.
Okay, all right.
So we have both.
Okay, could the board get kind of maybe some more details of the reading index by grade?
Sure.
Level? Okay. And then my other question, down under Students Reporting Proficiency in Critical Thinking and Problem Solving. So it says a survey was administered to the students. I'm trying to understand how, so are we asking students?
Yeah, we're asking them to self-report. We ask them to self-report whether they are, feel like they're improving in the area of critical thinking and problem solving.
Okay, do we have any way of actually measuring if they are improving in critical thinking? I mean, if I'm a student, I'm not going to say, "No, I'm not, I'm not improving."
Yeah, it is tricky for a couple of reasons. One is it's an additional, you have to balance it against an additional assessment. So how will we measure some of these things? Is it an additional assessment that we really want to give our students on top of all of the other assessments that we currently administer in the school division? Or let them be reflective on who they are as a learner and their skill level? Our hope is, over time, they're being more honest in their reflections as they come to understand and see themselves as curators of their own learning. We certainly want to hear their perspectives on how they perceive themselves as learners. So the other thing, we balanced it again, like I said, was against the number of assessments that are already given.
So do we have any current assessments that measure critical thinking and problem solving?
No, not directly.
Okay. I mean, I just don't see how self-reporting really gives us an accurate measure of that. Maybe if the teachers are reporting it, maybe asking the teachers if they think that the child is... But I just can't imagine a fourth grader knowing whether or not they're proficient in problem solving. And so, that's just my feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Franklin? Somebody, was it you, Smellman? Is that it? Did anybody else have their hand raised? Okay. That's it? Thank you so much. You did a fantastic job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we have the annual compensation update by Mrs. Woodhouse, and this is very interesting, so get ready.
Compensation is always interesting.
Excuse me, not that the compass, 20 to 25 was not, I did not mean that. And as always, you do a wonderful job, Ms. Baniki. Dr. Baniki, sorry about that.
And I'm going to follow in Lisa's footsteps. I know sometimes when I get excited, I tend to speak very quickly, so I'll make sure that I try to keep the pace at a good pace. So, good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. I am Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resources Officer with the Department of Human Resources. This has been, I'm sorry, I just realized, there we go. This has been an extraordinary year in the area of staffing for school divisions across the nation. This year, we have not only seen teacher shortages, but also experienced shortages in other areas, such as our bus drivers, bus assistants, custodians, and food service staff. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has been resilient in recruiting and retaining staff. This year, the school division persevered and opened its doors with 35 teacher vacancies, and currently has enough drivers to ensure the students in the city of Virginia Beach reach their classrooms safely. To say this was quite a feat is an understatement. This success would not have been possible without the collaborative efforts of the administration, the staff that serves our students, and the support of you, the School Board. As we begin to embark on the Division's 2324 Superintendent's Estimate of Needs, the School Board received information from our consultant Siegel regarding the results of the Comprehensive Market Study. This information was presented at the December 10, 2022 workshop. So today's presentation, the Annual Compensation Update, will focus on reviewing the goals of the study and information pertinent to the development of the Superintendent's Estimate of Needs. As part of the agenda for this afternoon, we will look at the progress we have made this year regarding our compensation programs and some enhancements the Division utilized to handle vacancy shortfalls. Next, we will review some market comparisons for some of our hard-to-staff, non-instructional positions and other items. We will also look at the impact of the Virginia Minimum Wage Increase on Virginia Beach City Public Schools through 2026, and a comparison of the healthcare premium costs to employees. Finally, we will share, in no particular order, some budget items for your consideration. It can be said that there are many paths on a mountain. The key is finding the right path. So what various paths or enhancements did Virginia Beach City Public Schools utilize to recruit and retain staff? At the beginning of the 2223 school year, the School Board funded a 6% increase for all employees in allocated positions on both the instructional and unified pay scales. Increased the entry-level hourly rate for bus drivers to $21 per hour, including trainees. To ensure the successful operation of our 2222 summer school programs, federal funding was used to maintain the 2021 summer school rates, which were increased by 14%. Continued the process of increasing the value of educational allowances, which had not been increased since 1996 prior to the 2021 school year. This represents year two of a three-year plan to increase allowances. To meet the challenges of staffing custodial vacancies, the Division continued the Custodial Initiative Program, which allowed our current non-instructional, non-exempt staff to fill vacancies after their contractual hours. And then continued compensating teachers covering a colleague's class during their planning or lunch bell at $35 per class when a substitute was not available. Eliminated non-resident tuition for staff who opted to bring their child to Virginia Beach City Public Schools as out-of-zone students. Effective January 1, 2023, reduced the cost of health insurance premiums to the employee. Provided all eligible employees in full-time equivalent allocated positions with up to a $1,000 bonus to recognize their hard work and commitment to Virginia Beach City Public Schools on December 15 and January 15. We once again temporarily increased the daily rate for all teacher and nurse substitutes by $15 per day, and at Title I schools by $35 per day. Effective July 1, 2022, we implemented a $3,000 recruitment and retention incentive for non-instructional positions identified as hard-to-staff. These positions initially included bus drivers and assistants, and later in the year, also included food service workers and custodians. In a continuing effort to lock in new hires, we provided prospective new teacher hires, early commitment letters, and letters of intent. While this list is not totally complete, these accomplishments in the area of compensation represent a win for all stakeholders. Students, staff, and the Division, we are appreciative of the School Board's support in making these changes possible. Compensation and benefits represent 85% of the Division's budget. As mentioned previously, our compensation consultant presented information regarding the cost to restructure the Unified and Instructional Experience-Based Step Pay Scales. As we prepare the budget, it is important to review the recommendations shared by Siegel and the standing in the market for positions identified as high priority. As a reminder, there were three project goals for the Compensation Market Study. Measure Virginia Beach City Public Schools' salaries against the market. Understand the relationship of our positions to our peer divisions, in particular Chesapeake. And develop strategies to maintain or improve our salary structures to ensure we're competitive in the market. For the Unified Pay Scale, Siegel separated the recommendation into phases with the goal of addressing priority positions first. Phase One, increase the grade assignments for the high priority positions identified in the chart. These positions, bus assistants, cafeteria assistants, and custodians, represent the lowest wage earners in the Division with the cost of approximately $3.6 million. Phase Two, realign positions impacted by the movement of priority positions in Phase One and increase grade assignments for positions identified as being below market. The cost is approximately $309,000. Phase Three, redesign the Unified Scale so that the percentage between steps is 1.3% consistently, and that cost is approximately $13 million. The overall cost for the Unified Pay Scale is approximately $17 million. As previously mentioned, three jobs on the Unified Pay Scale were identified as being a priority for consideration based on the factors you see here. High vacancy rates, recruitment difficulties, retention issues, lowest wage earners, and lack of the Division's ability to compete with other organizations. So for this presentation, we will review the entry rate for comparison, as this is what the employee typically sees. Bus assistants in the Division work with special education bus drivers to ensure the safe delivery of students to school. As indicated in the chart, bus assistants rank number four for entry-level salaries in the local area and below the average hourly rate of $12.97 for the school divisions surveyed. The entry-level hourly rate of $12.24 puts us behind Newport News, Hampton, and Chesapeake. Cafeteria assistants rank number five for entry-level salaries and below the average hourly rate of $12.93 for the school divisions surveyed. The entry-level hourly rate of $12.24 puts us behind Norfolk, Newport News, Chesapeake, and Hampton. And finally, custodians rank number three in the local area and below the average hourly rate of $12.88 for the school divisions surveyed. The entry-level hourly rate of $12.24 puts us behind Newport News and Chesapeake. Hampton is not included as they outsource their services. In reviewing the teacher scale, Siegel determined that while the entry-level salary was competitive, the Division loses its competitive edge after year one and beyond. Of the peer school divisions surveyed as determined by the School Board, we ranked between number three and number six for each five-year increment for salaries. For instance, five, 10, 15 years through 30. Therefore, Siegel provided three options for the administration and School Board to consider. Option one, adjust the salary structure to consistently provide 1.5% between steps and provide a step increase for employees gaining a year of experience. The pros is that this option meets the Board's project goals of being competitive in the market. Under this scenario, employees will receive between a 1% to 15% increase, depending on where the employee falls on the scale, for years of experience. While this option is costly at approximately $38 million, it meets the Board's project goals. Option two, allows the Division to break the implementation into two years. Year one, adjust the salary structure to provide 1.25% between steps 0 to 15 and 1.5% step between 16 and 43 years. Year two, adjust years 0 to 15 to 1.5% between steps. So basically, the 1.25% from the first year up to 1.5%. Years 16 to 14 would remain the same at 1.5%. This option places the Division above the overall peer market average by 2.4 to 6.7%. This option places the division above the overall peer market average by 2.4% to 6.7%. However, it does not meet the project goal and places Virginia Beach City Public Schools behind Chesapeake by approximately 1.6% to 3.1%. Year 1 implementation cost is approximately $27.1 million, and year 2 implementation cost is approximately $17 million. And then our last option, 3, also allows the division to implement the changes over two years as well. Year 1, we would adjust years 0 to 15 by 1%, and years 16 to 43 by 1.5%. Year 2, we would then adjust years 0 to 15 to 1.5%. While this is the least costly option initially, the con is that it does not meet the project goal and places the division between 4% and 7% below Chesapeake. Year 1 implementation cost is approximately $16.2 million, and year 2 implementation cost is approximately $27.9 million. Substitute teachers. Substitutes are a vital component of ensuring that the school division continues the educational process in the absence of staff members. Teacher substitutes are a dynamic group of individuals who step in when the teacher is not able to be there. Much like the quote at the top of this slide, we have taken steps to address the shortages of teacher substitutes by increasing the daily rates using ESER funds. Please note, while we temporarily increased the daily rate by $15 per day for all teacher substitute categories, we did provide an additional $20 per day for substitutes who picked up assignments at our 17 Title I schools. So where do we stand in the market regarding substitute daily rates of pay? The following chart provides insights into where we stand in the market before providing a temporary increase. Currently, we rank number two for licensed substitute teachers behind Newport News. We are tied first place with Newport News for non-licensed substitute teachers. And finally, we rank first for long-term substitute teacher rates. Once again, we were able to temporarily increase our substitute, teacher substitute rates by an additional $15 per day using ESER funds. The additional $15 is not reflected in the values presented in this chart. So for example, a licensed teacher substitute currently makes $135 versus the $120 as shown in this chart. Moving on to our educational allowances. These are typically given for having advanced degrees, a license, or certification in a specific area, such as National Board Teachers, Registered Interpreters for the Deaf, or Master's Journal Man License for Maintenance Service Employees. For the purpose of this presentation, we are going to compare our educational allowances with our local school divisions. Please keep in mind, the educational allowances are subject to VRS contributions, so not only do they add value to the employee's yearly income, it also impacts their retirement earnings. Currently, 59% of teacher types have educational allowances for advanced degrees. In 2021, represented the first time in over 25 years, funding was made available to start increasing the division's educational allowances, which helped to improve our standing in the local market. With the board's guidance, this process started with the intent of increasing the allowances over a three-year, based on a pre-established amount. However, due to funding, the requested amount for the phase-end for the last two years could not be fully funded. The 2022-23 school year represents the second year of this process. Currently, out of the seven school divisions surveyed, Virginia Beach moved up in the rankings from being tied at fifth place to third place for teachers with a master's degree. For the master's plus 30 EDS, the division remained in fifth place, only ahead of Hampton Public Schools. And for the doctorate, the division moved up from sixth place to fifth place, only leading Hampton and Portsmouth Public Schools. With a national teacher shortage continuing to challenge the resiliency of our recruitment efforts, continuing to address the value of our educational allowances allows the division to remain competitive and persevere in this tight labor market. As previously mentioned, the division took the first step during the 2021-22 school year to increase and provide equity in the value of educational allowances. Over a three-year period, the information in this chart represents the final year of this process. With over 3,300 of our employees receiving educational allowances for advanced degrees, here you see the amounts paid by two of our local competitors. Last year, the school board provided 1.2 million in funding to increase our educational allowances, resulting in their current amounts shown here. In order to finalize the work of increasing our allowances to be competitive, we would need to increase the values to the targeted amounts shown here. The overall cost to make our educational allowances competitive is approximately $2.9 million, inclusive of benefits. Understanding the division is looking to also adjust the Unified Teacher Pay Scales, we could extend the cost to fully implement the changes one more year at a cost of 1.5, 1.45 million over the next two years.
Okay. I'm going to stop you right there.
Okay.
Because we need to decide what we are going to do, because it is already, sorry, 4:30.
I just do 5:30.
I mean, 5:30. So, do we want to skip our recess, and, or do you want to go to recess and bring this back? Everybody wants to do recess, okay.
Okay.
All right, so we will start this over after the formal meeting.
Okay, not a problem at all.
Okay. And then also, the closed session guys will come after, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Totally understandable.
We are having the school board recess, it is 5:29. We will resume our formal meeting at 6 o'clock.